All right, I'm calling to order the May 27th, 2020 meeting of the Milton School Committee. I just want to make a motion to say that we are still conducting our school committee pursuant to the executive order dated March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law under the Baker Executive Order. The first step that I want to do is approve the May 27th agenda. Does anybody have any changes or additions that they want to make before we start?
Just one thing.
Yeah.
Would you change reentry task force for the record to return to school task force? That was formally named and the name was changed. So just for the record, return to school task force. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Okeydoke. All right, is there anyone online for good old citizen speak?
Sheila, there's no one online other than the group here.
Than the group. Awesome. Okay, then we're going to move over to the superintendent's report. And before I, before I fully turn it over to the superintendent, I just want to make a clarification that the superintendent is doing a mid-cycle update on her superintendent goals. She is on a two-year cycle from 2019 to 2021. The school committee does a formal evaluation according to DESI guidelines every two years of our superintendent. But we do have mid-cycle updates because we still in the district do, we do as a school committee, our yearly district goals and the superintendent does, she would update, she does yearly goals even though she's in a two-year cycle. Sometimes the goals are a continuation in that two-year realm and sometimes she gives herself certain goals for each year of the two-year cycle. So I just wanted to clarify that she is going to just give a, we're at a midpoint cycle now in that formal DESI evaluation process and the superintendent will report out with various members of her administrative team tonight with regard to her mid-cycle update. So without further ado, Superintendent Gormley, take it away.
Thank you, Chairman Varela. I also probably should have added under, am I echoing?
You are.
Under my mid-cycle review, if you would add VIVU, the name of VIVU, our district, just for the record, our district data analyst.
Okay, will do.
So, good evening. As Chairman Varela said, tonight is a mid-cycle update and I have to tell you, with remote learning and the pandemic, this gave us an opportunity to bring everybody back to teaching and learning and I thank the school committee and the viewing public. Individuals with children in the schools are going to find this very reassuring. It's the work of the teachers and the administrators. And so this will be a freestanding document tomorrow for the public to see. The superintendents in Massachusetts all work under the same framework. We create professional practice goals, student learning goals, and district improvement goals. We're going to begin with the professional practice goal, but the student, after we do that, the student learning goals are all based on MCAS. So I've spoken with Chairman Varela and after this is over, we're going to discuss, you know, coming up with perhaps additional goals because these MCAS goals, MCAS isn't being administered, so we can't mid-cycle evaluate those goals. And then we'll go into the district improvement. So without further explanation, we'll start with the professional practice goal. VIVU, our data analyst is going to, we met as a team and VIVU is going to present a mid-cycle update on this goal. And VIVU, you'll start with the goal and take over?
Sure. All right, so we're going to try to do this as best as we can. Kat is going to be moving the slides while us all, so I'll just let her know when to move on to the next slide. But our professional practice goal for this year is to support instructional teams at the elementary, middle, and high school levels to develop systems tracking the implementation and effectiveness of interventions for students in the MCAS bottom 25% subgroup. So just before actually delving into the intervention, I just want to just remind us all what the MCAS bottom 25% subgroup is. Kat, next slide, thank you. So as we all know, four years ago, Massachusetts decided to change, switch over to a new MCAS testing system and it's called the Next Generation MCAS. It's going to be primarily all computer-based and it is more rigorous than the legacy MCAS that we used to have before on paper and pencil. And really, the whole point of switching over to this new Next Generation MCAS is to make sure that today's schoolchildren are developing the requisite skills and knowledge base to meet today's college environment and career environment by the time they graduate from high school. So that is really why we, the state switches over to the Next Generation MCAS. So a major focus of this new MCAS system, this MCAS testing is on closing the achievement gap by raising the performance of the lowest quartile of students, so that's your bottom 25%. And that's a new subgroup that is identified for each school and for each district by DESI based on the spring testing round. And that is looking at the combined, both the combined ELA and math MCAS scores for each student in the school or in the district. And the expectation is that there will be improvement in this subgroup's performance on the next year's MCAS. So that's how you are held accountable for whether you're, you're moving the performance of your lowest performing quartile of students, either in the school or in the district. And so DESI decided to use the bottom 25% as a grouping because before that, they were using different measures for subgroups based on race, socioeconomic status, on disability status, on English learning status. And although those subgroups are still considered in that accountability measure, DESI decided to use the bottom 25% because every school has a bottom 25% every year regardless of whether you have, you know, other types of subgroup in your school or not. So it's supposed to be a common way for DESI to really gauge how all schools, whether you have other types of subgroups or not, are performing against these MCAS metrics. Next slide. So I'm now going to talk a little bit about all the different intervention programs that we have put in place to kind of address this academic gaps for the bottom 25% in the Milton School District. So all the program that we have developed this year to address the needs of the, what we call the B25 group, varies across the four elementary schools. So I'm going to talk about elementary, then I'll move on to middle and then the high school. Just to give you all a flavor of all the different programming options that were on the table for this year. So before, you know, we had school closure, our elementary school have some version of beyond the bell programming that we'll offer to students in the B25 group to strengthen either English language skills and/or math skills for those students that were identified by the states. And something that all teachers do across our school is to differentiate, make sure that you look at data to differentiate instruction during the school day using reach reading, everyday math, and some schools are using Study Island as well as a tool to differentiate instruction. This school also have a computer club that was formed before school to help some of those students who might be, whose technology skills might be the inhibitor to them performing on the MCAS. So we just want to make sure, because this is a computer-based assessment, we just wanted to make sure that all students are comfortable using, you know, different aspects of technology and we didn't want that to be the reason why they're not doing well on the MCAS and showing what their knowledge and content on the MCAS. So next slide. Some other types of programming that we'll offer included a weekly RTI, a response to intervention block for both math and ELA that was implemented on the school. So the, the school changed kind of the, the structure of their scheduling to allow an RTI block and teachers were looking at student data, math data, ELA data, and then separated them into groups and then offered instruction to meet the particular needs of those smaller groups for this weekly RTI block. Students in grade three, four, and five were also provided extracurricular activities and to engage in book clubs during lunch and recess weekly. Grade three students were offer a fall and spring session of Saturday Academy to reinforce ELA and math skills. So prior to school closing, we had the fall semester completed and then we were about to start up with the, the spring semester. And these are Saturday morning classes that students are invited to come in and they were coming in, you know, to get some of these reinforcement in, in their academic skills as long, along with other types of enrichment activities for the children. And then grades four and five in one of the schools offer their B25 students opportunities to attend before, after-school programs such as mentoring, Rising Star, or MCAS support. Okay, so, next slide please. At another school, we have teachers and specialists using assessment data from the B25 group, so the bottom 25 group, to make sure that they are targeting interventions within the classroom. The math coach at the school supported teachers in grade three and four by looking at the MCAS results and the, the teachers work with the math coach to set up cycles to make sure that content knowledge gaps on the MCAS where students were weak, they make sure that those were addressed during these cycles when the math coach were coming into the classroom to support teachers. And at another school, they also piloted the use of online assessments via Otis, which is an online assessment platform and data warehouse that we introduced to the district this year to try to see if they can track reading comprehensions in grade three and four. So the, the teachers at the school, the curriculum coordinator worked together to translate all these paper pencil tests that align with the curriculum onto an online platform. And the thinking is that, you know, if you give students plenty of opportunity to do these type of more formal assessment check-in online, that by the time they get to the MCAS, they would know exactly what to do. Technology would not be a factor in how they do on their performance anymore. So those were some of the interventions for elementary level. The middle school really focused on strengthening the core curriculum that would serve all students and one of the reason for that is because when you look at the total population of students who take the MCAS at the middle school, it is, you know, 700, 800, 900 students. So a quarter of that is 200, 250 students. So with that amount of students in your building, it's, it's not conceivable to design, you know, specific program like the, the elementary schools can to specific smaller groups of students. So first they thought about how can they strengthen their core curriculum to make sure that all students were getting really strong instruction in ELA, in math, and science, and then differentiate those instructions for our struggling learners. So in this vein, the English department, and you will hear Kat DeRoche, our K-8 literacy director, talk more about Lexia Rapid in the next section, but the English department implemented this new literacy screener, which is, which runs the gamut from K through, through eight. And this screener is part of the first step in a curriculum review process that is going to bring us a new, hopefully, a new curriculum that would focus more on subgroup differentiations, on making sure that we're meeting the needs of our struggling learners. So with, with the Lexia Rapid, with MCAS, with internal assessment teachers are really using, you know, all these points of data to help form the tier-two supports, help them point out what the tier-two support should be for students in the middle school. Next slide. In the math department, a new curriculum called Illustrated Mathematics was just newly implemented across all grade levels, six through eight. I believe that it's been a couple of years in the implementation, but this year it was full, full implementation across the three-grade level. And this curriculum, this new curriculum emphasizes visual representation, promote the use of multiple strategies, and helping with problem solving with procedural fluency. And the great thing about having a connected curriculum across all three-grade level is that you know what to build on a year after year. And a lot of PD sessions were provided to teachers to really help them pick apart the content knowledge in math and to share tools and strategy for supporting their students. So as you can see, this, this strategy with curriculum work is really going to impact, affect and hopefully lift the performance of all students, not just our struggling students at the middle school. Well, next slide. So the Pierce, the, the Pierce Science Department, they had a goal for a certain benchmark performance for their B25 students group on the Common Assessments. And a small group of teacher, what they did is they put the Common Assessment on Otis online and they were starting to administer that and track that. A couple of teachers did administer the, the Common Assessment in this way and they were starting to look at results and everything prior to school closure. And so it was really, we were looking forward to seeing the impact of this online assessments because this means that teachers no longer have to grade all the, the multiple choices, you know, everything, the, the open responses, they're still going in and they're still grading that, but everything is organized for them and they get the results right away. The students get the results right away. So it cut down a lot of time waiting for, for things to be graded. Know what I mean? All right, and then at the high school, some of the academic intervention for the bottom 25% group include support, MCAS support classes for ELA, math, and science. And the science classes were already offered. I know that ELA and math were starting to get up and running in the midst of this. Another intervention is the homework club and then other interventions were provided during academic support, math support, and English support classes for students in the B25 group. And in terms of social emotional support, because as you all know, academic is not just about student performing on a particular test, the MCAS, whatever, whatever it is, but it's really about making sure that students are ready, are there and ready to learn. So a lot of students in our B25 group will also offer support in the Bridge Program, which really helped them hone their organizational time management skills. There were one-on-one mentorship or small group mentoring. And the administration at the high school was also very keen on communication with the family to make sure they are aware of the importance of the MCAS and attendance and making sure that the students show up on time so that they have the, the full learning time devoted to their learning. Okay, next slide. Other supports, they had weekly, bi-weekly case coordinator meetings where they were troubleshooting internal and external factors that may be holding students back from achieving academically. So that was important to the high school. And then content teachers also offer before or after-school extra help sessions to any students who needed the extra support. All right, next slide. So as you can see, there was a lot of supports put in place to make sure we are addressing the needs of our lowest performing student. And not everything was perfect or up and running, but there was a real focus at the district level to ensure that the needs of the bottom 25 students were considered and acted upon. And then in terms of systems that were put in place at the district level, we, this year, we really introduced two main system, new system. And that one is the implementation of Lexia Rapid, which I, I alluded to earlier in grades K through eight. So before, you know, our, our literacy assessment was really broken down by what, what happens in elementary, what happened in early elementary, what happened in, you know, later elementary, then what happened in middle school. This K-8 Lexia Rapid screener really gives us the whole full spectrum. K, so even kindergartners were taking the screener early in the year at the midpoint and, you know, were halted by school closure from completing this screener, but Kat will talk more about that later. But because of the consistent data that we can get for every classroom and for every grade level, it really allows us to track literacy gains across, you know, from beginning, middle, and end, but also across the years. And since this is only the first year of implementation, we were really excited to see some, some, some results that came out of this that were really positive and that were telling us that we're moving in the right direction by implementing a screener, a consistent screener for the district. And then the other system that we introduced to, to staff was Otis, which is an online assessment platform and data warehouse. So Otis really has the capability of storing not only your students' demographic information, but also all the assessment data, the lesson, everything in one place online. So when we were envisioning a, a new system for the district, we were thinking, what would help to make teachers' lives easier, student lives easier, and parents as well? And by having one central system where everyone can plug in and, you know, the data follow those students year after year, so you can enter in the MCAS data from third grade and when they move to fourth grade, the next year's teacher can look back and see how they did the fifth grade, they can see kind of a projection of, of, of learning data for the student. And that is something that students, that teachers have been asking for because we have so much data floating around, but we don't have really a central place to put it all and to make sense of it. So we were really hoping that Otis would help us to be that one-stop shop for, for teachers, for students, for family. And we started, the, the initial training was delivered to administrators and following this pandemic or even, you know, through the summer, we're starting to think about how do we get staff up and running on this new system so that everyone can really see the full benefits of this going forward. And I think especially in this era of remote learning and our new current reality now, this can be a really useful system for us just to track how, how students are doing. Okay, next slide. And looking ahead, systems for supporting our struggling learners. So really, you know, as Superintendent Gormley said, we have no MCAS testing this spring due to the pandemic and we're really looking to DESI to provide us with any guidance on how to measure academic progress. Without MCAS in place, we will not know how our bottom 25% really performed this year. And I don't know what that's going to look like in the future, what the Department of Education is, is going to think about MCAS for this year or next year, or how they're going to really evaluate that data. But regardless of whether we have MCAS or not, we have the internal assessment data, we have Lexia Rapid to help us benchmark our students' learning progress this year. And as I said earlier, going forward, we really plan to use Otis as an online common assessment platform where we can deliver, where we can administer some sort of learning checks for students to make sure that no students are going along during this era of remote learning. And we really need a way to determine the impact of school closure on our struggling students so that we know exactly where they stand when school reopen, what we need to do. And these are some of the plans that are, that we'll be thinking about through the summer and into next fall to make sure that, you know, we are not leaving any student behind. But as you can all imagine, it's a very stark reality for families across the board. But we will try our best to put in place systems that will hopefully be there for everyone and we can, we can look on this system to make sure that, you know, we are, we're providing the support that we need to, to families and students during this time.
Thank you, V. I didn't know, Chairman Varela, if you wanted to ask members if they had any questions on V's presentation before we go on to the next goal?
Yes, I, I would, I think it's good to just ask goal by goal, but before, I should have, Superintendent Gormley, when you started, I mean, for the record, I, I did want to say that for your performance goals, you have currently, you had, you know, what, what V just went over, which was your professional practice goal about implementation and effectiveness of interventions for students in the MCAS, in the MCAS bottom 25% group, which she just went through thoroughly that we could ask on. But as you said at the beginning of the presentation, and I just want, want for the record, that the next three goals, which were under student, student learning, were all connected to, of course, how well our students would have done on the MCAS this year. So you're not going to report out on those because we're just going, I mean, I am going to make a motion that we just eliminate those because, because of the fact, under the pandemic, there will be no MCAS, there's no way you can report out on them. Like, all of them are about reporting out on the fact that our students would, you know, meet certain goals after the MCAS were taken and since they won't be taken, we can't evaluate them. And they were all under student learning. So for the record, I, I just want to speak to that. I mean, maybe we can make an official vote that will eliminate those three goals. And then there are three more goals that I think you'll move on to under district improvement that you'll speak to that are not connected to MCAS. So with regards to this professional practice one, with regards to interventions for students in the bottom 25% subgroup based on last year's MCAS, does anyone have any questions or anything?
Thank you.
Dr. Craighead.
First of all, V, thanks for, as always, the thoughtfulness and the thoroughness. And I know you were working with a team, but I appreciate the work everyone's done. Early on in the presentation, you talked about the accountability for the lowest quartile. And in that, in that accountability measure, is the state looking at the same cohort over time or is the state looking at fifth grade, then the next fifth grade, and then the next fifth grade?
That's a really good question. And so they redesigned the, the bottom 25% measure so that it follows the same group of students over a one-year period. So if you take, if you take the MCAS in third grade and you fall into the bottom 25% based on the third grade MCAS, then in, in fourth grade, when you take the MCAS again, they're going to expect to see an increase in your performance.
All right.
But then they'll have a new group of, you know, bottom 25% third grader, which can move on to next year. So, you know, it, it is following the same. So, you know, it, it is following the same group of students, but they essentially have, they're creating like multiple groups of B25 every year.
Right.
Yeah.
So you, you get the joy of following, tracking all of that data.
Right.
And I just had a quick question for anybody on the team. The homework club that was mentioned for the high school, is that an after-school activity?
Yes.
And does it just have one instructor with a?
Yes, sometimes, sometimes two high school teachers will share it. They use Milton High School library.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Member Superintendent Gormly, just to follow up on Dr. Craighead's, is the homework club that she spoke to, when you say that there are one or two staff members that share that, do the, is that, is it different because this is a special like strategize, strategy you're using on a certain group? But do any of the, I know the library a lot of times has National Honor Society student peer tutoring in the library before and after school. Do they also ever work with any of these students or assigned with that, or is this a totally different tutoring program?
It's different, but you can go up there after school and you can see, to your point, National Honor Society students, and you'll also see teachers working with individual students, groups of students, or sometimes students on students.
Okay. Great. Member Rose Marin.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you sound good. Nice and clear.
Yes, I want to thank you, V, for this great presentation and, and it's, it's great to hear about all, all the work that's being done to understand how our kids are doing. And I was particularly interested in, in hearing about the Lexia Rapid and Otis tools and how effective those have been and glad to hear that you're starting the thinking about how you're going to evaluate how kids are doing after we come back to school because I think the impact of the closure is pretty dramatic and we're going to need to be able to respond to that. And it sounds like, do you feel comfortable that these tools that we have in place are going to be useful for that purpose?
Yeah, I think as to the Lexia Rapid, Kat DeRoche is going to talk to us more about that, so I'm going to save that question for her. But in terms of Otis as a tool to push out common assessments to, to students and family, I think that is something that we need to explore because right now, doing remote learning and I have two, two young children who are doing remote learning at home, it's hard to know, you know, whether, how students are following along. Teachers and administrators have worked so hard to, at breakneck pace really, to put all the materials together for, for everyone to use. And I appreciate, you know, the variety of materials that is there on the remote learning website. But we also need to think about how effective is that? Like, are students, have students really retained any learning following all these activities? And that's a question that I think we all need to answer before we can move on and say definitively like, this is effective, this is not effective, we need to change, we need to do something differently. And so I'm really hoping that with, with Otis, we can push out assessments easily. And I don't even want to call them assessments because I think there's a lot of anxiety around using that word, especially now when a lot of families are left up to their own devices really to figure out how to follow along with the curriculum. So really, I, I'd rather, would like to, to use the words learning checks, you know, where we could see how students are doing and not to, not in a punitive way, but just to see where they are so that we can fill in that gap when they come back.
Exactly.
May I add something? That with the Chromebooks, we've had discussions and there were plans to have students return the Chromebooks and there was really an outcry from the principals and the administrators that the Chromebooks will be in the hands of the students all summer. And already our teachers and administrators to member Rose Marin's question are planning summer learning activities. So we're leaving the Chromebooks, we're not going to gather the Chromebooks till mid-August and then bring them in, clean them, redistribute them. And our teachers and administrators are already working on plans for the end of this remote learning as V said, a check, an assessment, and then plans for September so that a child doesn't come into the high school and have seven assessments, Chairman, Rose Marin, the first day, but to thoughtfully, within the first two or three weeks, find out where the children, the students are at and meet them where they are. So those discussions around what happened in remote learning this year, plans for the summer, and then assessments in September are really paramount at this point in going on.
Absolutely. Thank you.
A member White.
I'm sure many of you saw the article in the Globe, I think on Sunday, about Boston school systems recognizing that there are probably 20% of students who had not been on their devices for the month of May and worrying very much about the kids who have just like dropped out and are not accessing, aside from the kids who are accessing and struggling with material. Milton obviously was tracking these children and these students as well. Do you, as an administration, have any sense of how many children we're having trouble reaching out to or connecting with?
So I, I speak to Chairman Varela about this question. This, these teams have done a phenomenal job monitoring students' involvement, they're checking in, checking with teachers. And so at the middle and high, we have approximately 60 children that, I'll tell you, the assistant principal, one of the assistant principals at the high school makes probably 25 calls a day, stays in contact with students. So between the middle and high, we have approximately 60 students. Our adjustment counselors, the teachers, the administrators, the principals have been in touch with these children, with their families, again, identifying what the barriers are. Member White, and working with them, whether they need adjustment counseling, things in their lives, working with our family liaison. And then at the elementary, grades three through five, we have the Chromebooks in their hands. There's really been constant contact and involvement by all but approximately 16 children. And then with the, being a preschooler, an early educator myself, I am concerned about the pre-K, K1 and 2 with May, under Dr. Spalding, the leadership of these packets, it's almost like the food, I said to Chairman Varela the other day, went from 35 meals to we went over 4,000 today. So the packets, we're seeing increased numbers of parents and guardians coming all through the week to access those packets. But that, so that's hotter when they're online and we can't gauge their involvement and we don't have constant contact with pre-K, K1 and 2. Again, contact, involvement, and then another whole presentation could be the expectations of children with special needs. The teachers who teach children with special needs, the one-on-one sessions they have done, they have closer monitoring. But I was very, you know, again, the work that our teachers and administrators have done to keep all Milton public schools involved. You know, Vee Vu said to me today, V, you are very eloquent about the level of material that's available, but again, for families, it is, it's been a challenge. But they have stayed involved and we are going to stay in contact. What the commissioner said when we began this, keep learning alive all summer in a different framework. So when they come back, if we have to go back into remote learning, you want them to have a change in their learning experience in the summer. But, you know, Betty White, you asked the question, to have 100% of all your students involved in some kind of remote learning, actively learning and accessing and working with the teachers, that's the primary goal.
Thanks.
So I was proud of those numbers. I was proud of those numbers, but one is too many.
Right.
One is too many, but there are as many students as I said, there are stories and families and circumstances, there were children who, there were families who left the state.
Member Abba Hart or Dr. Donahue? Any questions?
I have so many questions, but they're not really appropriate for this forum. I would love for V to come back later on, you know, next in the fall perhaps, and talk more about all these wonderful initiatives. And I just want to thank her for always for her work, which is just, you know, enlightening and engaging and informative. And I'm just wondering, I know you, you talk a lot about quantitative, obviously, assessment here, but I'm just sort of wondering your thoughts about capturing qualitative thoughts from students and families about this experience, right? And thinking about what, what educators learned about how children learn in a different way, what students thought about some of the projects they worked on and project-based learning and different ways of showing what they learned and how you capture that now and use it to better our district, especially for younger learners.
Yeah. I, I think you really hit the nail on the head here. I have a second grader in a kindergarten at home, so I'm very, I'm living the reality with you. You know, I mean, there's a, a whole curriculum online and to do anything, I would have to sit there next to my kindergartner and go through everything with them, even when the teachers are offering one-on-one session, a small group session, which I don't know how they, they can manage to do all that on top of everything else, that's probably happening in their home circumstance as well, but they're doing that. And, you know, my, my kindergartner, she, she doesn't do well over online learning. She, she's shy and she would just prefer to be there in person with her friends, like she doesn't want to be talking to a screen. I don't, I don't know what to do about that. So I think that you, you raise the right questions, like what kind of information can we really gather from this experience to make sure that we're not turning, my biggest concern is not turning my, my students off and other children in the district off from learning, from their love of learning, their love of, you know, going to school because they're dreading this screen time experience. And I don't have a great answer for you for that, and I hope that we're all learning together and we'll build some sort of solutions together that can work for everyone.
Yeah, I mean, that's my daily experience too with preschoolers and my colleagues who have same age as you, her son like cries every day before Zoom and he's like, I'm not going on another Zoom. You know, and, and so it's really.
That was the exact experience of my, my daughter this morning. She's been chugging along, so I thought she was fine, I thought she was independent. And then she just broke down this morning and said, mommy, please do not make me go on another call, like she just cannot take it. And I, I don't know what to do.
But I just think it's, I mean, it's just, it's so, the amount of experience is so powerful and you can't measure it, right? But I know that, you know, the efforts of teachers are amazing, it's just, the whole thing is just overwhelming in so many ways, but there's just so much that you could probably learn and gain from it. So thank you, V.
But to member Abba Hart, we, at the Cunningham they piloted and later the reentry, the back-to-school group we'll talk to you about, they're going to do a survey, but we're going to survey parents and students because we want to learn what they feel about this experience in the situation that we have to then use remote learning again next year.
Dr. Donahue, any queries, questions, comments?
Thank you again, V and your team. This is, this is great. I always enjoy listening to your presentations, we're able to, to turn this amalgamation of data into something understandable. I'm excited too about all these initiatives and I guess my only comment is not really a question, my only comment is I think there might be some value to build off what, what Dr. Craighead said, this, this sort of rolling cohort that we're going to be following year to year, they're going, we're going to cohort them in the spring when they take the exam and then next spring we're going to see how they do and our, our, our progress will be judged, but then simultaneously we're going to be establishing a new cohort for next year. I think there might be some value in following the students who, who don't stay in the lowest quartile, the, the sort of edge case students who are in one year and out the next, just to see if they, you know, will end up in the year after or the year after that. That, that would be my only suggestion, that we, we somehow, you know, incorporate that into our database just to make sure that, that these, because, you know, as you point out, we're going to be doing a lot of targeted work toward the lower, our bottom 25% quartile. But, you know, seeing, seeing who moves in and out from year to year, there might be some value in that, and there might not be, it might simply be, you know, an amalgamation of individual needs and issues, but there, there might be some, there might be some value to be gleaned from there.
And, and that's why I'm excited about our new Otis system because besides being an online assessment platform, it's also a data warehouse that allows us to kind of gather all these data in one place for every student. And, you know, if you imagine that you can follow the student year to year, you know what the MCAS scores are going to be from year to year to year, you can pull a cohort, any cohort that you want and examine that data. We weren't really able to do that before because we didn't have a kind of system to store all that in one place, like it would have to go back eight, 10 years of, of testing to figure out all the cohort and everything. But with this new system in place, I'm very hopeful that we can do exactly what you just mentioned and do analysis if it makes sense, if there are some patterns around students moving in or out that group, that I think that would be valuable for us to know, to explore. Definitely.
This is, this is Sheila. I just, I just had a question again about Lexia Rapid and Otis, which I know you've mentioned it, and maybe Lexia can be, I know Kat's going to speak to it a little bit, but I know they're fairly new things that we've been using in the district. Are they free? Are we, are we paying a subscription to them for like, as an online assessment and learning tool? Is the question, is it free or are we paying like a yearly subscription or how, what, what do we have to do to have access to it? And I know you speak to it in assessment with regards to the MCAS, like I know we don't have them this year, but we worry, but how, how are they in connecting with the, with the curriculum that we have, you know, AKA the, the reach for reading and the everyday mathematics at the elementary level? And I know we have the new 6-8 math that you spoke about in this presentation, but how, if these are just like a, if these are just like an overall assessment system, how, how do they intertwine with the curriculum that we're using? Do you understand my query?
Yeah. V, do, can I jump in about, I'll cover Lexi. So, hi Sheila. So the, the Lexia Rapid, we do pay a subscription for. It, it houses student data, it, it gives teachers and administrators access to dashboards. So you can do, and I'll show you some of the, the ways we've been using that in, in my slides. But it allows us to see district patterns and trends, statewide patterns and trends, and then grade level patterns and trends. The screener is meant to be a universal normed grade and age-based assessment where we can look at a five-year-old as a five-year-old compared to other five-year-olds, not necessarily compared to what the curriculum has delivered. So what it does is it gives us a different bucket of information on a student and where they are in their skills and strategies in a literacy competency rather than how they're learning the theme of the story we read in Reach for Reading, which is also very important but very different. So we want to know how, what skills and strategies are leading to some gaps we're seeing in the curriculum, how can we remediate that, and then also target those skills and strategies either within the curriculum or, you know, with a, with a different approach.
Program or curriculum. Okay.
That will help.
And as for Otis, so that is a system that the district did purchase this year. We have that in our arsenal as a tool. And we are going to keep it next year and go, move. And we are going to keep it next year and, and go moving forward. We got a great deal.
When you buy it, one time, was it like a contract thing? Do you buy it for a five-year contract or how does that, what does that go?
Um, I think, uh, we did have a contract with it. I'm not too clear about the details. AJ actually was in charge of kind of the negotiation behind this. So I knew that we had a contract with Otis for, for the, for at least the next couple of years.
Probably like a five-year. And, and both of them you can use, I know you probably mentioned this and I apologize if you did. You can track them from K to 12 on both systems?
Oh, Lexia Rapid is actually a literacy screener.
Yeah.
But it does come with its own, you know, website and, and data and system and all that. Otis is just a system in itself. So it's, it's an organizing system that you can put data into or that you can use to generate assessments. But yes, we use it for K to 12.
Okay. And it's, and it's on Lexia and maybe Kat, you can speak to it. It, I know you say it's literacy, but it, does it track literacy for high school students as well? It's like especially struggling students or is it just a K eight gig?
For now it's K eight. The rollout was in tandem with our curriculum reviews, both at the elementary and the middle. If I were to predict, um, I would guess that, you know, in the coming years, as we review all curriculum, we would look at the ELA at the high school and then we could make some decisions based on that. But I agree, I think, um, as you'll see, it's really done a lot for our teachers in terms of really targeting those kids and seeing the underlying skills that lead to some performance deficits.
Okay, great. All right, so, so superintendent, back to you. Do we move on to district or you take it away?
Absolutely. So that's a perfect lead in. First, V, thank you very much.
Yep.
We're moving in with Kat DeRoche to our first district improvement goal. Kat?
Great. So I'm sharing my screen now. I am presenting, okay. All right. So, um, this district improvement goal is to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of reading interventions by establishing a K to eight reading screener, an ongoing assessment system that identifies students in need of tier two intervention and provides ongoing data to inform instruction. So this is actually lifted right from the assessment plan that was given to and discussed with teachers the first day of professional development in August. Um, and the idea is to remind us that in order to provide the best and most appropriate instruction to students, um, assessment plays a key role in our classrooms and also collaborative time. So the idea is to regularly evaluate the quality of programming. So looking at tier one, as well as how subgroups respond to tier one, to identify and monitor reader-specific skill profiles against what's expected for age and grade. So not necessarily against what our curriculum says, but what we know to be true in a universal sense, normed, um, behaviors. And then look closely at readers' response to specific lessons and units within the curriculum to inform our lesson planning. So we broke down what assessment really looks like, both on a, on a screening level and then on a formative curricular instructional approach. So this is sort of sums up what our approach has been this year. And it started in September where it began with a screening. It then moved to analysis, the identification of students in need of tier two supports, and then instruction. And then we cycled back to screening in January and started the cycle over again. And so the idea behind this is to really make sure that we're always looking and checking in with students that are identified as needing tier two supports, but also those students who don't. And just how we can continually support them in ways within the classroom, as well as with supporting staff such as reading specialists. And so the screening, um, within this tool in K to two is done on a one-on-one basis. So we have approximately 811 students, say, across the district in K to two. So the four reading specialists, the assistant principal, curriculum coordinators and myself, V helped us as well in the fall. And we traveled around to each school and worked with students one-on-one to complete the assessment. We wanted to make sure that we were allowing teachers to continue that instruction and that we were collecting this data with students so that they could get the information. Grades three to five can take it independently on a Chromebook. And so that was facilitated in a bit of a different way and could be more efficient. But it was really important to be able to administer this to students one-on-one from K to two. The analysis happened in a few stages. We were able to collaborate or with the elementary principals and identified one faculty meeting that followed the screening cycle. So in October and in February, I traveled around to the four elementary schools and presented district-wide data to the groups. And it wasn't just classroom teachers. It was PE teachers, art teachers, music teachers, support teachers. And the idea behind this was to really ensure that all staff in the building who interact with students, which is all staff, understand where students are in some of these areas because they inform how students, uh, perform, not just in the classroom. So if you have a student in an art class who's not understanding the directions or they're having trouble, um, I don't know, engaging in the activity, if it's a written activity, you can understand a little bit more about where they're coming from and, and what they're working on. If you can see some of the data and have the conversation with colleagues about that. So that was a really important and I thought powerful piece of this process. Following that, um, teachers engaged in more deep analysis with their curriculum coordinator at the building level during common planning time to really identify, um, class trends and really look into what small groups look like and what the focus should be based on screener data. Along with this was the identification of students in need of tier two support. And in grades one and two, we have the support of reading specialists. And so we worked hard with central office, the elementary principals, reading specialists to establish, um, uh, it, it's some equity across the district in terms of who is getting selected based on the criteria and how students were scoring in word reading, which is identified as the way to look at how students, um, are engaging with text and what they need support with. And so that, um, really helped for the reading specialist to norm our progress monitoring, um, processes this year. And then they taught into that before the screening happened again in January. And again, we just sort of started that cycle over again. So this was a really, as V was saying earlier, we were really, um, excited about this continuing to June to see the full year through. But like all things, we took a break and, and paused. We will do so next year. So I'm going to go through some of these slides that were presented, um, at the faculty meeting or the gist of them was, um, just so you can get an idea of what some of the trends were. And I'll show you the graphs that came from, um, that data. When we think about K to two, we noticed in the fall, the patterns and trends, we looked at areas of strength and growth. We noticed that foundational meaning-based skills, like word meaning, vocabulary pairs, those were strong in K to two. We did see an interesting shift in grades three to five, um, where this became, um, word meaning, uh, you'll see in the future slides that, that it went from being a strength to an area of growth. The area of growth for K to two, code-based skills, phonological awareness and word reading skills. So this was an area that we then followed up with some professional development opportunities for teachers to engage in around, um, phonics and reading specialist support. From the analysis, we went with students who performed below 21st percentile rank in word reading in grades one and two. And that identified 32 to 35 students per school. And that was, um, across all four schools. And so reading specialists worked with those students, um, in that first round. And so this is what the fall data looked like on a visual scale. So the blue indicates above grade level. The green indicates on grade level and the red below grade level. So as you can see, um, the patterns and trends show very visually here. We tend to think, um, you know, green is on level. It's really good and we, we believe in that. What we really want to push students, especially, um, as they go up in the grades, is to really move those, um, ratings into the blue because we find that in order, you know, you have this skill and you demonstrate it in a screener. But in order to perform that skill and integrate it and synthesize it independently, you typically need to be operating at an above-level rating. So this is the conversation we had with teachers. To give you a side-by-side comparison, this was the winter data. And you can see a very significant increase in the, in both the blue and the green. We saw students make some moves. We like to think it was in, uh, as a result of really strong teaching that we know is happening all the time. I think drawing attention to data is another good reason to, to, um, you know, help teachers and, and all of us really focus on, okay, what are these concrete skills and strategies? We need to help students, um, succeed in, in, in the project or performance-based, um, tasks that we ask them to do in class. And so our analysis in winter, the K two patterns and trends, uh, area of strength, foundation and meaning-based skills, still we saw an increase in phonological awareness, which, which showed very strong growth, vocabulary pairs, um, areas for growth with code-based skills, meaning word reading skills and letter sounds. And so again, that gave sort of the charge for the winter, um, part of the cycle to instruct both in the tier one and tier two, um, environments. And as a result of that strong growth, we were able to bump up the criteria. So students performing below a 26th percentile rank in word reading. So district-wide, 37 students were added to tier two while 38 screened out. So when they screened out, this was not a see you later, um, we're not, we're going to sort of release you, um, without supports. We wanted to make sure that this was a gradual release. And so while they didn't receive direct instruction as before, they were still being monitored for progress, um, in an ongoing way so that we could ensure, um, that we weren't removing a, a support that, um, would cause them to regress. So that was important. So tier two intervention, what does that look like? We did a deep dive of analyzing the screening data. We ensured that reading specialists were allocated for equity across the four schools. Curriculum-aligned intervention with focus skills and strategies related to the needs. So reading specialists utilized the Reach into Phonics, uh, tool that, um, supplements Reach for Reading. So they were getting consistent thematic language, while diving deeper into the phonics concepts that were indicated in the screener. And like I said, they continued to progress monitor student growth. Moving on to three to five, um, we'll see the graphs in just a minute. The fall patterns and trends, interestingly, the strength, which you would likely expect in word recognition and foundational skills, with areas for growth, looking at academic language specifically in vocabulary knowledge. We then extrapolated that that would both be in discussion and in print. Likely if it's a struggle in print, you have to think we need to build that up through discussion. So we wanted to highlight that for teachers. And also an area for growth, reading comprehension. While that is a culmination of many skills, it's something that we likely are attributing to academic language with vocabulary knowledge and made the prediction that if we bolstered the vocabulary knowledge with academic language, we would see growth in reading comprehension. So this is the three to eight. We grouped them together as, um, they typically, you know, the, the, the data, we, we wanted to show the pathway from grade three all the way up through middle school. But you can see that, um, they, in, in the fall, you can see that the, the academic language, um, in vocabulary was the area where we were focusing, as well as the performance task of reading comprehension. Then you can see the growth that happened to the winter. So we saw some significant growth, particularly in grade five, which was very, um, very encouraging. So the winter patterns and trends, again, word recognition and foundational skills and tactic knowledge within academic language, and still that area for growth. Academic language, as I'm sure a lot of you know, is something that continues to be something that students need to work on all the way up through high school. It changes, the, the texts get more complex. Often, uh, speaking, listening and reading, they all contribute to academic language with exposure to, to high, uh, level text. So that's something that's always going to be a focus, um, I would argue for, for most educators. Tier two intervention, uh, we, we do not have reading specialist support in these grades, but we, as a result of screening data analysis and common planning with groups of teachers, there was an offering of a small group professional development that met for 10 weeks and 25 teachers were engaging in that work and shared with their colleagues. So we took the screening, uh, data and we really broke it down into student-specific, uh, groups for teachers and shared best practices. We watched, um, some example videos. We talked through, um, material collection and actual lesson development. So it was a really, um, it was a really, really good working group. Moving up into six to eight. So in six to eight, very similar to three to five, the area of strength with word recognition, syntactic knowledge, um, and areas for growth, academic language with vocabulary, and then the reading comprehension skills, very similar pattern here. So this shows six, seven and eight. Again, very, uh, promising, very few students in below level, very small percentage. And then moving into winter, um, we still saw, you know, they, they held pretty steady in terms of the screener results. So very, um, very similar conversation in winter. We saw, um, areas of strength and for growth. And this really helped for us as a team to, um, think about as we went into the curriculum selection, uh, when we were building the rubric, what kinds of things we would look for in our, um, tier one core approach. And so a lot of that had to do with academic language, speaking and listening rubrics. Wanted to make sure that that was built into, um, what we were looking at for a program, which was well timed. Here's two intervention, what's different at the middle school in the formal sense? So we did screening data and analysis as a department. We looked at what the impact was on targeted reading support course. So this provided for us a very concrete lens through which we could look at which students were receiving support from the reading support class. And, um, which students were making significant progress, really teasing out and drilling down what it was that student needed work on, which has been really helpful, um, in a professional sense to discuss with, uh, the teachers. The reading support course did adopt a tier two curriculum, Read 180, with, um, for skill and competence building within that small group. It, it, it has students move through modules that focus on, uh, fluency, reading comprehension, writing about reading. It really has shown to promote student motivation because they can track their progress and it, it dovetails really well with the data we get from, um, the literacy screener. So looking ahead, um, the impact of school closure has had, um, significant impact on everything. But just to give you an update, our tier two support with reading specialists, they are now meeting with students who were, um, identified as needing tier two support. When we closed, they are connecting with and holding small group sessions for those students, um, in an ongoing basis. The K to two data collection, so as I mentioned before, K to two data collection involves a one-on-one scenario, which is not possible in this remote, um, scenario. So there is a website called lolilo.com and it is a K to two, uh, resource that students, it's an adaptive and responsive website that supports students in phonics, uh, phonemic awareness, fluency, reading comprehension, word recognition, and it's set up like a game. And so students who answer, um, correctly or incorrectly, it gives, it gives them a pathway to give them more support in certain areas or more challenge in others. So that was rolled out today, um, as a way to engage students to practice those early literacy skills, as well as give us some insight into how, um, well they're navigating some of these concepts, having been remote, um, for this long. And so it's hopeful that that will give us some ideas as we talk about knowing where students are. I, I feel it's a very hard thing to know. I think, um, with the lack of validity and reliability of environment, um, of many of our students not knowing, um, what it looks like or, um, you know, what their ability to access some of this is, I think I hesitate to have a hard and fast way to collect data. However, I think it is important to check in on those students that we can, you know, find out where they are, uh, since we haven't seen them in front of. you know, find out where they are, since we haven't seen them in front of us. Grades three to eight will participate in Alexa Rapid Screener remotely. Again, acknowledging that this is not ideal scenario. However, this type of a screener will give us information on that student's skills and strategies. So we're aware of what curriculum we've put in front of them. We know which students have engaged with it. But we really need to know, you know, how are they still, how are they able to demonstrate their understanding of literacy skills when given a task? And six to eight curriculum selection and implementation process is ongoing. It did, we, we, we pressed on with the process. In the next weeks, there'll be a recommendation to the superintendent's office. We have wrapped up webinars with each of the companies that we were examining, utilized a rubric and all ELA teachers have been engaging in that process. It's been, it's been a really, it's been really good. And looking ahead into fall of 2020 in light of COVID, planning for assessment and curriculum instruction, again, it's hard to plan for the unknown, but we are looking forward as a curriculum team to ensure that we circle back to things that were not covered due to the closure, ensuring that we bolster and, and close any gaps for students that we know were disengaged for whatever reason. And then adjusting tier two supports, looking at how reading specialists will be allocated. Again, not inundating students with assessments in the first two days or two weeks, but making sure we're thoughtful about that. Kind of already went into this, so I jumped the gun. That's already been said, but again, continuing to be thoughtful about our planning and obtain data on student achievement when we return to school in ways that make sense for students and just being mindful of what people are up against currently and in an ongoing way. And I will not, unless someone would like to, but I wanted to share some clips of teachers who are using Lexia data or screening data on an ongoing basis to group students and progress monitor. Ms. Sarah Hammond, who's a Glover third grade teacher and Mrs. Kirsten Driscoll, who's a Tucker grade two teacher, both expressed how Lexia and the screener has impacted their teaching and then shared some of their remote learning lessons with small groups in clips here as examples. So a big thank you to them. This has been hard on teachers to jump into action with the technology, never mind the, the sharing of practice, but I think that's one thing. Back to Margaret's comment earlier, you know, what have we learned? What have teachers learned? I think a big thing is, you know, again, they took on so much right away. You know, how are they going to engage their students? How will they get information out there? And I think the next step for that is to share best practice and really feel open and, and comfortable having conversations and being reflective, which teachers are already doing. So I think it's a.
Thank you, Kat. Excellent. Sheila?
Yeah, I'll go through. Member Rose Marin, any questions, queries, comments?
Just to thank you, this is, this is just amazing and how far we've come in, in the work that you've accomplished, Kat, in your, in your new role this year. And thank you for, for all your work. And to see that growth, looking at grades three through eight on one page is, is really amazing and to see it over time. It is just so reinforcing that, you know, you're on the right track and just keep up the great work.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you.
Member White? Well, you're on mute, Betty. Unmute yourself.
Very thorough and excellent job, Kat. I just wondered, when you did your initial assessment, was that in September? And when was the winter assessment given?
Winter assessment was in January. Yep. At the middle school, it was very close to when they got returned from school. We also have reflected on the timing of some of this, I think, which is true of any new thing you do. Middle school would wait a couple of weeks and in elementary, it was the second week we were back.
Okay. So the progress was really impressive for four months.
Yeah. Well, and you know, the, the October, November, December months are busy for elementary, but yeah.
Yeah.
Member Eberhart?
Yeah, yes. Thank you, Kat. That, my, my head is spinning. Wow. So much information, such good, good work. Thank you for all, to all the teachers and everyone for their efforts. I just had a really quick question about like English learners and dual language learners and how does that intersect with your data?
Yeah. So it's a great question. We had, and this is anecdotally and Glenn could probably give you the number. We had a pretty significant amount of English language learners in the fall.
Yeah.
And, and I would, I would say, you know, of those English language learners, there were a good number that were limited to borderline non-English speaking. And so there was some consideration and referral with Elaine Chung to determine what was appropriate. So if students could not access language, in the English language, we were not in the position to subject them to something like this. Students who were borderline or she knew, I mean, she had screened a lot of these students. She was able to give us an indication of this student, you know, it would be, it would be worthwhile to have them engage in this. And so it did skew a little bit. So then in January, if that student took the assessment, it was still good. The teacher was really eager to see because it would pinpoint some of that underlying skill deficiency, if it was even deficient.
Out of them. That's great. Thank you.
Dr. Donahue?
Thank you. I'll echo what, uh, what member Rose Marin said. I've seen the, the data here. It's, it's wonderful. It reminds me of some, before they switched the MCAS, our cohort data and how we could see it over years. It's, it's beautiful. Thank you. I think, I think your, the, the plan that you've articulated sounds, sounds really solid and I'm, I'm encouraged by it. And I think as you were starting to see results before we took our break and I'm, I'm looking forward to when we're back to normal and we can sync up our results with the MCAS and, and show how your year-to-year efforts are producing results in the MCAS as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, that was definitely V and I were, we were interested to see, because you know, you don't want to say a screener is predictive or curriculum embedded is predictive, but you like to see some correlation. So yes, we, we share with you in that disappointment.
Dr. Craighead?
I, I guess this sort of jumps off from what Dr. Donahue was saying, but I just kept being struck by, as you were going through these wonderful data sets that were so visually accessible and thinking about how helpful this kind of screener is versus the MCAS, right? I mean, the MCAS gives you a number at one point in time. You can only access it months afterwards. And this allows you for three times a year to actually identify, analyze and put interventions in place so that you see changes in such a short period of time. It's amazing. It's wonderful. And it really, well, I won't say anymore about the MCAS, but, but it really, it's, it's, it's really an amazing thing. So thank you for all the work that you've done on it.
Thank you. And I think that's a good point. I think some bigger conversations we've had as, as faculty and as administrators is really understanding the difference between why certain assessments are given and what to do with those assessments and what not to do. Because that is, you know, for a while, MCAS was the only thing we had and through no fault of anybody, you know, you use what you have. But it's not always the most appropriate, even the screener, you know, you, you take, you take the screener and you take it for what it is. We then have conversations with teachers who say, oh, well, they woke up and didn't have breakfast and they didn't do this and it was just not their best day. And we, you know, you take it with a grain of salt. Nothing is the perfect picture, but it can help with trends and, and patterns. So it's a good point.
If I might, Kat, also to Dr. Craighead's point, for the school committee, the redeployment of the reading teachers after every testing. You know, in past years, reading teachers would start with groups, but using this data to redeploy district-wide, we actually looked and we, we use the data three times a year to change the assignments of our reading teachers as a district, which for me was invaluable.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm not going to say anything else. I, I just want to echo my, my colleague said that, you know, you know, sometimes parents are, you know, that I'm going to say like the anti-testing, you know, parents of the world, they're overtested and how many tests? But, but seeing something like this where it's, you know, a couple of times a year and like you said, even if they say they did well the first time and maybe not so well the second and you checked in with the teachers, like it, it, it's necessary to have assessment to, to, you know, to have a, you know, a barometer, like where are they at? But it's nice to see this being able to used almost. It's, it's, I don't want to say more positive, but it seems like, I don't know if it's even less stressful on the students. So it's just for the administrators and teachers to see where the students are at and then where they can improve them as opposed to this like da, 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 the big bad MCATs yearly, make sure you get to bed early, make sure your mother and father give you a good meal. We have the phone call from the district and, you know, it's all that stress and anxiety and it's nice to see that this is used and, you know, it's just kind of pat, you know, trotting along in the year and is, I don't want to say more effect, I mean, as Dr. Craig said, we're not going to say whatever about the MCAS, but seems, you know, a more effective overall tool in assessing students and their progress. But so it's great information. Thank you.
No, you're right, though. It's instructive. This, this data can be used in an instructive way. It's not going to be stuck on their back for the next year.
It's not this like high-stakes, like high-stakes testing and the kids like, you know, it's kind of sad in a way. Then in fourth grade, they're like, I gotta get to bed early and are you going to make me pancakes tomorrow because it's like MCAS day and, you know, the, yeah, you know, it just, there's a lot that can get in your head about it. So, yeah, that's good to know. Okay, back to you Superintendent Gromley.
Kat DeRoche, outstanding. Now we're going to move into our second district improvement goal with Dr. Karen Spalding and Dr. Elaine McNeil-Germay around cultural competency.
Great. Thank you. While the presentation is coming back up, I, I just wanted to add one piece to the question about our English language learners. Because V was, Vivu was talking about interventions and then Kat DeRoche was talking about assessment plans and just add that Elaine, under Elaine Chung's leadership, we had Title III funds this year under the ESA grants. And so she created a plan, working with principals for additional support for English language learners. In some cases, it was before school, in some cases, after school, in some cases, Saturdays. And that had to obviously shift to remote. So just wanted to add, add that as an additional piece for our English language learners. So the superintendent's district improvement goal related to cultural competency is to implement a robust plan for enhancing the cultural competency of the district, which would be done by building capacity within the multi-public schools leadership team to support culturally competent practice within respective schools and departments and by establishing culturally sensitive processes and protocols in the areas of curriculum and instruction and hiring and retention. So the next couple of slides are framed with the sort of main themes of that goal in mind. First, in terms of building capacity within the leadership team, thanks to an introduction by school committee member Margaret Eberhart, we partnered with Dr. Kalise Warnum and she crafted and facilitated a professional development series for all the principals, all the members of Unit B, which again are the curriculum coordinators, directors, assistant principals, as well as central office. Before the school closure, we had done four of the six sessions and there were little homework assignments between sessions. So we have two more to do. We're finishing, we actually have one tomorrow remotely and another one the, the following week. And Dr. Kalise Warnum is a cultural proficiency coach. And the focus of this series was on developing cultural proficiency, really understanding definition of terms, things like that, as well as fostering our skills and engaging in difficult conversations about race and culture. And, and for us, difficult conversations, both with students and with grownups, whether they be staff members or, or parents or guardians. In addition, we really tried to focus, so as we, you know, thought about purchasing books for the leadership team or funneling out literature, we really tried to focus it on a theme of cultural competency or cultural responsive teaching. So for example, the Rhonda Hammond's new book, which is Culturally Responsive Teaching and the Brain, which really takes a neuroscience look at sort of culturally responsive teaching and builds, she makes recommendations for really building in students the drive for independence and their cognitive capacity to do so. And in addition, for example, we are contracted with Hanover Research and they assemble literature reviews on topics of interest to the district. And so for example, one of those literature reviews included implicit bias and social justice. And then there were opportunities in, whether it was instructional council or with the principals or in other smaller groups, to have conversations about the, the content of what was being pumped out in terms of reading. Thank you, Kat. I'm going to hand it over to Dr. McNeil-Germay.
Okay. So we've also continued to build up our collaboration and work with COSBOK, the Coalition of Schools Educating Boys of Color. And they hold two different gatherings a year. In the fall, they held one specifically around their standards and they've developed over the years and they've been refining it over time. Seven core competencies of highly effective schools, particularly working with boys and students of color. And these standards can be used for self-assessment, reflection and planning. The seven standards are around assessment, parent, family, community partnerships, curriculum and instruction, school engagement in culture, school leadership, school counseling and school organization. And so we sent a, a team that represented elementary, middle and high to that session. A lot of those members were also part of the cultural competency committee. And, and one of the outcomes from that is we've been working to develop some after-school boys and girls programming at all three levels that we will hopefully, you know, once we have it fully rolled out, have some mentoring between schools to help with some of that transition work of going from elementary to middle and middle to high and, and having some connections for students over time. So we are continuing to look at those standards. And then the spring gathering, which is actually tomorrow, is on healing-centered engagement post-COVID-19. Their speaker is Dr. Sean Ginright. And it's going to be looking at the disproportionate impact in different communities right now and looking at some opportunities for trauma and healing. So I know that that equity and thinking about how people are impacted right now is a big part of the re-entry task force. So we're hoping to get some really good information to bring back to that team as well. We also had different teams of administrators that went to, we went a little too far, if we can go back a slide, thank you, that went to MTSS this year and the disproportionality series. And so essentially what we were looking at in these is how we can continue to support all students. I know Dr. Spalding attended MTSS and I think Mr. Roche, I attended the disproportionality as the elementary representative. And really we're looking at, you know, how the representation is in our data for the disproportionality, specifically looking at removal for students and looking at that data over time and making sure there's no implicit bias in it and making a district plan to improve that. So some of the things we started to develop, we just did this in, in February with the goal of continuing to build it out. But, you know, we looked at continuing our PBIS programming and strengthening that, reviewing our policies that are in place, continuing to look at the SEL interventions and awareness of bias. And I think, you know, again, in the time of COVID-19, I've had a chance to do a few different webinars, one last week for Desi that was their elementary spring convening. And a huge factor that they brought up is how careful we'll need to be about things like suspension data when we return because the level of trauma is so high and because so. And because so many adults, all of us, I'm sure, are also, you know, in this place of fear and, you know, easily triggered. And so really having to look at, you know, some surveys or different ways to gauge what has impacted students during this time so we can be aware of how to best support them. Okay, next slide. So the other thing that we've been working on, so the cultural competency committee, we had three areas of focus this year. We worked on the 2020, which was our Fourth Annual Minority Recruitment Fair, and we did host that on March 7th, right as everything was happening. This year, we decided to also advertise it through Eventbrite, and that allowed us to do some pre-registration. So a positive was we definitely had our highest pre-registration for our recruitment fair to date. We also had the highest number of partnering districts. We had 26 districts and or and our graduate programs, they came to join us. And, you know, jokingly, there's there's always something that kind of impacts the the recruitment fair. One year, we had a parrot failure year, the night before. Another year, it was like negative five degrees. This year, we we lost a few folks because it was right as schools were beginning to close. We had a few people that emailed and said they just weren't comfortable attending. But even with that, we did have a really nice number, 54 candidates came through. And we did a lot of follow-up after to reach out to get resumes for folks who didn't feel comfortable attending. So really hopeful that that will translate into some positions and and hiring. The cultural competency committee also worked on two surveys. We'd worked last year on an exit survey. And this year, we really wanted to look at why people stay. So, you know, what is it about Milton that makes people stay? And hoping to parse from that, you know, just generally some best practices, but also some best practices for our for our minority educators so that we can ensure that Milton is a welcoming place and that we are able to maintain our numbers that we are working so hard to reach through the recruitment fairs. The other thing we were working on, and this was from our partnership in previous years with 1647 around protocols for best practices. And so we had a team working with Marty McKenna to really just kind of encapsulate some best practices. I think now personally, I again, I've been thinking a lot about, you know, what it would mean to start school at this time, new to preschool, new to kindergarten, or just new in town, you know, how you meet somebody for the first time with a mask on or or maybe don't get to have a school tour and things like that. So I know that we'll have to put another layer on the great work they started. But they've really come up with a nice, you know, kind of robust plan of how to welcome families that, you know, we we do have a really awesome team of administrative assistants, but as people retire or move on or leave, something that we can have formulated for anyone in a role like that that is one of the first welcomeers to Milton Public Schools.
Great. So the Milton Public Schools has been an active member of the Massachusetts Partnership for University and Education for a few years now. There are about just under 25 districts who are member districts. And we meet monthly. We actually just had a meeting this morning, as a matter of fact. And much of the conversation does center around recruitment and retention of educators of color. We, what they've been doing recently, especially since the school closure, is connecting us with virtual job fairs. And they created a candidate of color database that's sorted by position. I am very excited to say that the high school hired a candidate of color from that database. So their efforts are working, which is great. In addition, they facilitate professional development. And then I'm able to bring back those strategies and and share them. Or if if it's a larger professional development, a couple, Dr. McNeil-Germay has gone to a couple of them with me. And we're able to bring those strategies back to the district in strategies for recruitment and retention of educator educators of color, such as, you know, for example, when we think about recruiting and about hiring, that we don't necessarily have to, if there's an opportunity to hire a candidate of color who has met qualifications and has potential, that if we're if we're worth our weight in gold as leaders, we should be able to really support that educator, even though they might be new or in their first or second year of teaching. So we don't always have to hire the person with 10 years or 15 years of experience and really thinking differently about hiring and thinking carefully about the kinds of questions we're asking during interviews. So we can really get a sense of the experiences of the candidate, whether it's a candidate of color or or not, and really understand sort of what their experiences are and where they are in the continuum of cultural proficiency.
So one of the other exciting things we did this year is we were able to put together a preschool professional development series. So over the last few years, about three or four years ago, we started to do some work with Erin Hardy, who's a Milton resident and who does quite a bit of work for the Kellogg Foundation and at Brandeis on cultural competency in early childhood. And, you know, we just did some informal sessions and gathered information from our kindergarten and preschool teachers. And one of the things we heard from them is that they really wanted some in-the-classroom strategies for support in terms of building up their own cultural competency. And so, you know, we've done, we've done a lot of work with that with Erin. And we last year identified Stephanie Kurington at BU, who had developed this series called Developing an Equity Mindset. That was a combination of online modules and in-person sessions. And so we partnered with her this year to offer that to all preschool faculty members across the district. And so they did the modules on our professional development days, but then also came together with coaches from BU to talk through what they were learning and and have some feedback. They were able to bring specific examples of questions or strategies they weren't sure how to approach. And I think really just having an open space to talk about things they weren't sure how to address in the classroom. We had really good feedback. We did do a closing survey. And from that, we got a response that 88% of those that participated felt that their knowledge base was improved and that they're confident to engage with families and colleagues with diverse experiences than their own had improved. So we're really excited about the outcome. And I think particularly as we are all, you know, experiencing remote learning, it gave the teachers an opportunity to really kind of walk through something at their own pace and their own timing and to kind of get a taste of what that was. It's obviously very personal to think through your own cultural competency and in your classroom practices. And so I think that that model worked really well.
Great. So I mentioned earlier that we had a professional development series for the leadership team that was facilitated by Dr. Kalise Warnham. I'm not sure if she knew it when she first met us, but this is going to be a long-term relationship. I'm sure she's happy about that because the the, her receipt of our folks and us in receipt of the work she's been doing has been extremely positive. And so we have, we're squeezing in a teacher PD pilot, believe it or not, before the summertime. And we know it's ambitious, but but we might be in a school closure. But teaching and learning and professional development must carry on. And so the plan is to facilitate six online sessions with teachers in the district, teachers, adjustment counselors, guidance counselors, school nurses. And the goals will be similar and the activities will be similar. But it'll be targeted to the level that that teachers teach, so secondary or elementary. And the kinds of activities that we engaged in, things like, again, coming to common definitions around terms, reflecting on our own experiences and and sort of our own biases. And then also doing a lot of role plays, you know, real, whenever she would describe these situations or scenarios to what she wanted us to respond, we all sort of shook our head and said, yep, that's happened to me. I remember a time when. And so that was really helpful because then we could practice those skills in a safe environment and really build our skills to use them in other contexts. And so the format will be similar for teachers. And our, we are absolutely going to pull that off in the next few weeks. In addition, the Milton Public Schools has a longstanding relationship with the Citizens for Diverse Milton. We have monthly meetings. The superintendent and I attend meetings with representatives from the Citizens for Diverse Milton. They, almost all, if not all, of the school-based diversity committees have a representative from CDM on their school-based diversity committees. And then we collaborate to facilitate two district-wide diversity committee gatherings. So all of the school-based diversity committees come together, typically in the library at the high school. And we plan those collaboratively in partnership with CDM. And so in the fall, we actually capitalized on what we had learned about the standards for educating boys of color. And we, in particular, looked at family engagement from those standards and reflected on our work in schools to engage families. And then diversity committees did action planning to enhance family engagement, particularly for families of color. In addition, what we had planned for the spring, but we pressed pause on that due to the school closure. But we were going to incorporate a problem-solving protocol that we were able to learn about through our partnership with MPDE. And it's a problem-solving protocol that allows small groups to reflect on a particular situation, a challenge, like the achievement gap, like disproportionality, but sort of whittled down to a more specific issue and then really brainstorm some creative action steps. And then finally, we have also longstanding relationship with Primary Source, which is a professional development organization whose goal is to educate global citizens. And they do that by fostering civic-mindedness as well as cultural awareness and really global competency. And so our teachers, because of our relationship with Primary Source, our teachers have access to during the year professional development. They have access to resources. They have access to summer. We have some summer institutes that will be starting soon. And in addition, it's it's wonderful to have this partnership because when when things come up and questions we have and materials we need, either about a particular culture or a particular situation that's going on, they are extremely responsive in providing those materials for us so that we can educate ourselves in the moment as well in responding to different situations and and things that might come up. So in terms of processes and protocols, thinking about curriculum, the, so I assembled an instructional council this year, which is all of the pre-K through 12 folks who are, who have a hand in curriculum. So the curriculum coordinators, directors. And we meet, typically, we meet once a month. Most recently, since March 13th, we've been meeting once a week. And we talk about, you know, obviously matters of curriculum and instruction assessment in the district, share best practices. And so one of the things that we've been doing this year is really reflecting on and refining, in general, the curriculum review process. And most especially, sort of thinking about how to incorporate a culturally responsive lens. And a specific example of of where that happened was the work that Cat DeRoche referenced at Pierce with the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade English Language Arts Curriculum Review. And so raising questions like, do materials relate to children's backgrounds? Are there adaptations for English language learners? And making sure that we're raising and asking those questions as we make our way through the curriculum review process. And in a couple of slides, we'll, I'll share with you what our next steps are to dig even deeper in that area.
Okay. And then in terms of the diverse reads collaboration, Tucker and Glover have been working closely together, the diversity committees, the last few years. And one of the things that have come out of that partnership is really making a distinct effort to bring in offers that are representative of all of the different cultures and races within the schools. We've had a really amazing parent at Glover, Sarah Crowe, who has been really influential in in connecting us with local offers as well as Blue Bunny Bookstore in Dedham. You know, when they have people coming there, they're connecting with us. And so we've been able to develop that even further now into a partnership with Milton Public Library so that we are offering twice a year, generally, an opportunity that's available for all elementary students to read the book and then either Skype or meet with the offer. So we had one scheduled for March with Erin and Trana Kelly, Lillani of the Distancy. Unfortunately, that had to get rescheduled. It was right when we closed school, one of those evenings. But we were able to do a virtual session last week with a different offer, Kwame Membelia, which was just a really great opportunity for the kids to get on and just ask all the questions they have about what it means to be an offer and how somebody comes up with these ideas. And Josh Coben was present, as well as Sarah Crowe from the Milton Public Library. And we hope to continue the partnership and be able to continue to bring in Collycott and Cunningham into that work. We also, at Tucker, we have a teacher leadership team that's been working on student and family relationships. And this year, one of the books that we targeted was Natural Allies: Hope and Possibilities in Teacher-Family Partnerships, written by Su Hong. And she is a professor at Wellesley that lives locally and had a contact with Frigine John Charles, who's a mother in the district. And we were able to set up with her two sessions. The first was a book club for faculty members. And Marty McKenna was able to join that and a few other district personnel, where the teachers all read this great book that really just talks about the ways to break down the barriers between families and teachers and and what it's like to be on both sides. And then the the follow-up to that, we had planned a family session, which we were building into the parent series for April. So that would have been open to all families in the district. Again, obviously, that was rescheduled, but we hope to bring Su Han in the fall to continue that work. It was, it was just really a great opportunity for teachers to take a moment to really think about the engagement. And again, now, it's so important that families and and faculty members feel like they can pick up the phone and make a phone call or send an email and and talk through challenges they're experiencing. So we really want to continue to reinforce that good work. So looking ahead, so the cultural competency committee for next year, we're going to continue the work that we're doing and obviously change our direction a little bit, given the timing we are in. So we are looking at student and family engagement in the time, the time of COVID-19 and any issues of equity that may come from resources or our needs availability for students. We hope to continue with our Educator Diversity Job Fair. That will be our fifth annual, and we hope to make it even bigger and better than this past year. And we were able to do our leavers survey. We have not done yet our stayers survey. But hopefully, you know, you know, the timing was not quite right. We were, again, planning to do that over April vacation. So once we feel it's an appropriate time to put that on teachers' plates to take a few minutes, we'll send that out and hope to be able to use that data to help us think about what else we can do as a district to continue to make Milton the best place for all educators to work.
Great. And in terms of the looking ahead for the curriculum review process, as I mentioned before, we might be in the midst of a pandemic and a school closure, but we march forward. So we do still plan to look deeply at the elementary math program for the 2020. Look at it during the review it for the 2020, 21 year. There's a group that's assembling next week to have, to at least squeeze in two meetings before the end of the year. We want to expand, expand the culturally responsive education criteria to move beyond looking, simply looking for, for example, whether or not, as we look at our literature, is it representative, you know, the the characters that we see in the book, for example, are they representative of the children in the classroom? And push beyond that and start to ask about validating the degree to which experiences are validated. Are we disrupting power dynamic? Are we looking at the roles of the characters within those books? And do those fall along racial lines or gender lines or whatever, or socioeconomic lines, whatever the case may be, to really dig more deeply? The the tool that that we are looking at and will be using The tool that, that we are looking at and will be using is the Culturally Responsive Curriculum Scorecard, which is out of the Metropolitan Center for Research on Equity and Transformation of Schools, which is out of the Steinhardt School of Culture, Education, and Human Development out of NYU. And so, it really, it's recently published within the last year or two, and it really digs more deeply into sort of looking at the culturally responsive piece in curriculum. And so, that's, that's sort of our work, this work ahead this year. As I mentioned, we are piloting the teacher PD, trying to get a group together, see how this works with a teacher group. And then, the plan for next year is to eventually get to every educator in the Milton Public Schools. The work with MDPE, MPDE, I apologize, is to continue the work in the area of recruitment and retention, that's really a primary goal for them, for that organization. But we've also, as, as a, as a group, have heard a conversation about expanding professional development opportunities in this realm, as well as dipping into some state-level advocacy and really trying to, as an organization and as a group of districts, really trying to advocate to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education around matters, especially of recruitment and retention, to ensure that, that they are doing work at, for example, higher education level, to really recruit and retain pre-service teachers, so that when we do our postings, there is a pool of candidates from which we can choose. And so, that's some of the work moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. Spalding, Dr. Elaine McNeil-Jamai, Jim and Verella.
Yeah, this was fabulous, great, I mean, everything's been great, guys. I'm, I'm really not going to ask for comments unless someone really has a burning question, because we're, we're reaching nine o'clock and we have a big agenda tonight, so we need to keep moving this forward. And this is amid, you know, just mid-year eval, this has been fabulous. But does anyone have anything on this that they want to query or question? Otherwise, I think we should just kind of move on, because we still have a lot on the agenda to get through. We good? Okay. Superintendent Cormley.
This next, and this next goal will be brief. Dr. Pavlicek's going to present, you've already seen this information before, but it was a goal and we wanted to recap it.
Yeah, so just, just real brief, Glenn, because it's like nine o'clock and we still have a lot to get through, so it'd be great.
Yes, I was going to say, I have the easiest part of this, not only is it the briefest goal, but there's nothing on here you haven't seen before. Between the Facilities Advisory Committee and the, and the School Building Committee, actually, Ada has presented all of this to you already. But the goal was to address the increasing enrollment and resulting diminishing availability of instructional space, in other words, to add both short and long-term goals for our enrollment crisis and how it affects our physical space. Kat, if you could move. And so, just very quickly, as I say, all of these things you've seen in December, the Facilities Advisory Committee unanimously voted to approve the Short Term Space Plan, and later in December, the School Committee also voted to present, to approve it. It's on the next slide, which, again, you've seen before, the notion of how many classrooms we would have to convert in order to deal with the expected enrollment of 17 strands of each grade in the elementary schools. And so, this is the slide we had back in December. Again, this is the short-term plan of how we would make those conversions in those various different spaces. Again, you've seen them before, whether it was moving Roma Tucker or eventually converting space in the Cunningham Collicott, on the fourth floor of the Cunningham School, or even taking space out of the Cunningham Collicott Library. Again, all of these you've seen before. And then, in terms of the long-term solutions, again, this is the other half of Member Rosemarin's work, is the, the school building project. The School Building Committee presented the statement of interest, you voted on the statement of interest, the Select Board endorsed this statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, and it was presented in the end of April. And now, at this point, we wait for their deliberation on it to see what money is available come December, what the list looks like, and whether we're on it. In the meantime, you know, the School Building Committee is still moving forward with investigating what the next steps are, they meet again next Monday night. But this is the progress to date, and as I say, I have the easy part of this, because there's nothing on here you haven't seen before.
Thank you, Glenn. So, in closing, I just want to thank Vee Voo, Dr. Elaine McNeil-Jamai, Dr. Spalding, Kat DeRoche and Glenn. And again, that's the mid-cycle update on the goals that you approved in O'Hama.
Awesome, great, thank you so much. Do you want to move on to Return to School Task Force?
We have, this is very exciting, we put out that we wanted to create a, what we're calling a Return to School Task Force, the response by volunteers, professionals in this community, teachers was, the response was phenomenal. Principal Glover, Principal Karen McDavid, and School Client Member Ada Rosemarin volunteered to co-chair, and they're going to give you a brief update very timely tonight, as a survey to staff went out tonight, and a survey to community will go out tomorrow, but I'm going to let them give a brief overview now on work that is going to really direct the lives and the education of Milton Public Schools students and staff.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent Cormley. I'm going to start out to just update you all on the fact that the Return to School Task Force is up and running, we are alive and well, and it's been a busy beginning time, but we are very excited to have convened a fantastic task force. Our core team is in place, we had our first meeting last week, and our second meeting is tomorrow. And we have quite a, quite a group involved. We put together our mission statement, which we reviewed and revised at our first meeting, and Principal McDavid has it up on his screen here, "To advise the Superintendent of Schools and the Comprehensive Plan to relaunch programs offered by Milton Public Schools in the time of the COVID-19 pandemic. This plan will be guided by up-to-date scientific research and guidelines, and will seek to optimize safety and security for all Milton Public Schools students, staff, and families, reinforce principles of equity throughout the district, and communicate progress to the Milton Public Schools community and beyond, so that our schools can continue to provide engaging, high-quality education and related services for all." And we have a team that has been assembled, this is our list of members of our core team, it's just shy of 30 people, so it's a lot to fit on a page. But as you'll see, we have our central office team, and all six principals of our six schools. We have our head nurse, Kim Coughlin, we have Amy Tom, who's representing Unit A, is this, is that correct? Unit B, thank you, who's a science coordinator at Milton High School. A.J. Melanson, Educational Technology, who we all know, Susan Moselli, Director of Special Education, Eileen Keeney, Administrator Assistant at Tucker. Carrie Devon is our Unit A representative, teacher from Pierce Middle School. We have Bill Ritchie and Bob Mayhew, representing Consolidated Facilities. And then, we have a number of community members who have volunteered, Jamie Lavash, Nathan Hutto, Abe Cardoza, and Doctors Jonathan Pinkus, Jeffrey Wallford, Dr. Mary Ann Decac, Dr. Patricia Janulowitz Lloyd, Dr. Susan Koch-Veser, who are working together on our new health subcommittee, and you'll hear a little bit more about that in a bit. Winston Daly, who is involved with Citizens for Diverse Milton and MFE, Peel Hollingsworth, executive coach to school leaders, Jenner Belegat, who many of you know from Fame and involved in mental health, and Christine Morrow, who we all know from Collicott and CC Green Space. So, it's an amazing team that has come together to do this work. And what we decided, and, and the, all the core team has agreed to do, is that each of them will be a liaison with at least one of these subcommittees that we're also establishing. And subcommittees, you'll see listed here, and Karen, I'll let you take it from here.
Sure. So, our subcommittees are actively being formed as we speak, I'm going to read this really quickly, so I can get out of sharing my screen and I can actually see you people again, but you can see the list, I don't need to read it to you. But we've really fleshed it out to the point where we feel like we've covered all of, all of the bases that need to be covered. And it was interesting today to hear from Commissioner Riley, who also shared similar subcommittee work that he has begun at the state level, and many of his subcommittees are echoed on our list, I think he should have asked us first before he started his work. But I'm, I'm thrilled with the response, I'm excited to share with you that we had, you know, so as Ada said, we have 30, almost 30 members of our core team, they are a very diverse and well-rounded representation of the community, as well as the staff, there's almost an equal balance of staff and community members. And our five docs on the team, our two public health folks and three MDs are unbelievable and are leading the charge. So, tomorrow, we begin with testimony from each of our five on the Health Subcommittee, who will all be sharing with us the latest information in terms of epidemiology and trends and, and medical information, as well as the impact that that will have on the schools. And we keep quoting Superintendent Cormley, who continues to say that we should be led by the science, and she's 100% right. So, everything that we're doing in any of those subcommittees that was listed will be led and, and sort of guided by the work of our Health Subcommittee, which we are very confident in, these are, these are some very, very bright and dedicated folks. So, exciting, we had so many throw their sort of hats in the ring, and, and we wished we could have asked them all to be a part of the core team, but we then circled back and community members who did offer to be a part of our committee, and offered them the opportunity to sign up for a subcommittee. I sent that out, Ada, I think yesterday or the day before, I sent it to 65 people. So, you know, thinking about the, the level of response from this community, it's really, really unbelievable, almost 30 on the core team, I sent it out to 65 additional members, and as of an hour ago, 55 of the 65 have already responded and signed up for a subcommittee. I, I've never seen a turnaround like that on survey data ever in my life, and even if I'm bribing people to do surveys, they're not doing them like that. So, so it's really, really a testimony to this community. So, what we're, our, our sort of next steps, as Ada said, we're, we're receiving testimony from all of our, you know, public health and medical doctors. And then, we are finish, finishing the formation of each of our subcommittees, that should be done within the next week. As Ada said, there'll be a liaison with each subcommittee, and then the subcommittees will sort of go off and, and do the, do the really good work that they're ready to do, and inform each week the, the core team as we meet. We've created a website, and that's going to be the clearinghouse for all information and resources. Folks are already sending me, you know, can you add this to the facilities page, can you add this to the early childhood page? So, it's going to become very quickly a compendium of resources that everyone's going to be able to access. And we sent a survey this evening to all staff, and it's deliberately open-ended, which is intentional and also going to be nightmarish when we receive the results, because we really wanted to, you know, we went back and forth, do we make it a list of checkboxes? And, and do we presume to know what people's concerns are? And it just didn't feel like it was the right thing to do. It felt like to leave it open-ended and say, you tell us, what are your pressing concerns? What are you most worried about? What are your biggest questions when we think about returning to school? So, it's open-ended, we'll get what we get, and then we'll sort through it and see if we can synthesize it and put it into buckets that will inform our, our work moving forward. And then, tomorrow, in the superintendent's blog, we wrote the, the intro piece, and embedded in that is a community survey, open to anybody in the community, but particularly to, to families of, of students in the Milton Public Schools, to again, say, what are your concerns? And what, what would you like us to be mindful of as we engage in this work? Arguably, the most important stakeholders here are the students, and so, our last step is to work with Nathan Hutto, he's one of our, our team members, and he's going to help us sort of design and implement a student survey process that will help us engage the voices of the students who are the people we serve. So, we will be surveying all of them and gathering all that information, just to sort of propel us forward and guide our work. And, and we'll continue to stay in line with everything that Commissioner Riley says, everything that Governor Baker tells us, and, and really work together with this group of people to make the best decisions, you know, we can make in terms of advising Superintendent Cormley. And I, I feel like if, it's a daunting task, but if anybody can do it, it's this team, they are unbelievably dedicated and very bright and very motivated.
I'd also like to just circle back to, in terms of the school committee, and I hope to get that out today, but, before this evening, but wasn't able to get it done in time, but by tomorrow, we'll also be sending you the survey that also includes the opportunity to participate in any of the subcommittees that you might be interested in. And we're offering people to put in first, second, and third choices, so that we can get balances on the, on the different subcommittees and all, but, and we'll certainly be sure to not put too many people on, on, school committee members in particular, on each committee, so we run into problems with, with quorums and the like. But we'd love, love your involvement and your voices in this as well. So, that's pretty much our, our presentation, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I think we might all have questions, I, I'm going to start, and then I'll go around. I have a couple of questions to start, I noticed on the list there, you had several doctors, is, is our head nurse on the committee?
Yes, yes, she is, yeah. And she has also agreed to be our liaison with Caroline Consella, the
That's great. My, my query too, the second query I have is, you know, that, this was, you know, it's a front-page article, I know Betty mentioned it about the Boston Public Schools, but there was a front-page article today, like in, and Karen McDavid, I know you referenced it, that the commissioner is putting this together as well, but it seems, you know, I'm going to vote, I don't care, I'm very vocal about this, I feel, although, just this is my opinion, I think that Governor Baker has done a very good job managing this for the Commonwealth overall. I think that the weak link has been information about schools, and I get that, you know, he's got, even in the phased plans that come out, there has been no mention about schools. And in my mind, it's health, the economy, and the education of the children of America, I mean, of the Commonwealth. And I, I feel that they have been lax in being, in, in having any kind of, you know, overall direct, direction. you know, overall direction to the Commonwealth as a whole. And I'm really nervous about this being cascaded district to district because this is going to be a tough year for every district in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And if we are constantly bombarded, I'm going to use the example of what we went through about the graduation process of, well, this district's doing this, and this district's doing that. And I heard that my cousin lives in Dover, and Newton's doing this, and Duxbury's doing that, and Falmouth is doing this. It's going to be a mess. And has anyone aggressively reached out to the commissioner or the secretary? Has anyone dropped a dime on reporters at the governor's daily meetings? Like, they have to give some kind of guidance other than MCATs is canceled across the Commonwealth. So they can't say, oh, well, you know, Newton is giving the MCATs, but Milton isn't. I mean, because whatever we do in the district, it's going to be, all the work that a committee like this does is still going to be up against it if we don't have overall guidelines beyond the CDC, but like Commonwealth guidelines for public school with regard to, I don't know, like, yeah, how, when we start? Do we have sports? Do we have extracurricular activities? Can you give any word, either Superintendent Gormly, Principal McDavid? Have you reached out to other superintendents? Is anyone pushing to ensure that a better message for the Commonwealth is happening? Like, and it shouldn't, I'm dismayed that the commissioner is doing this now in real time with districts. This should have been been happening at the time that the phase stuff was going on for the state. There should have been like another tier of schools that they were already thinking about for next year to cascade out to people in phases. So can you speak to that at all? Do you have any other intel?
We met with, we had a call with the commissioner today. There'll be another call next week. And the commissioner said that mid-June, he'll be issuing three or four plans for the return to school. Again, always, always indicating that watching the virus and the progression of the virus. So he committed that mid-June, there'll be three to four options for individual school districts to choose from and to think about returning to school. Issues around everything from athletics to special needs came up. He urged school districts today. I'll report on his call if you want next week. He urged school districts to start purchasing equipment, safety measures, masks, which was encouraging to me that he was talking about schools reopening in September. But that was today's call, and there'll be another call next week with the commissioner.
Well, that's helpful. I would ask that, you know, on the call, Mary, for you as a superintendent, or even if you can speak to your other superintendents, that this, you know, the option situation is what I'm talking about that sort of like concerns me on the level of like sports. So, you know, I think about, well, if Needham decides to have sports and Milton doesn't, and, you know, Newton does, but, you know, someone else doesn't, like, that, is there any, is there any kind of, you're talking, use the verbiage of options. So I'm questioning whether there's going to be any kind of a mandate across the Commonwealth beyond MCATs. But are you getting the sense that that's not going to happen?
I wouldn't really want to commit to that tonight again. But you're very observant, the phrase about options, about opening school. You know, there was talk about going back to school. Do all the children return to school? Or do half the children go to school one week? And then the other half of the children remotely? For me, in our discussions this afternoon, the option might be, if you were a small school district with a dwindling enrollment, you might be able to meet the regulations of opening. But if you were the Milton Public Schools with a booming enrollment, you might have to take the option of half the children go one week and half the children learn remotely, and then to switch off. So again, this was a first call today. It's very timely with tonight's presentation. And I'll keep the school committee informed and the public.
I would say also, Sheila, that, you know, we live in Massachusetts where there's a strong tradition of local control. So, you know, while the state can provide guidelines, I think that there would be also a lot of concern and risk with putting down a state mandate.
Yeah.
You know, obviously, when districts were closing schools all over the state, when the school closure came, and it became crystal clear that we all needed to be doing that, at that time, it happened. But, yeah, you know, there's a strong local control aspect of what we do in Massachusetts.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Anybody else have questions or concerns that they want to speak to about this? Right now? Okay, thank you guys so much. I'm going to, I'm going to put this on the agenda, you know, weekly. We can always strike it if there's really nothing to report. But I think moving forward, we should just have an, always have an update from you guys about where things are at. And, you know, again, if there's nothing to report, we can strike it. But this is going to be, you know, one of the most important and interesting things that people want to hear about and stay abreast of. So thank you guys for all your work. It's great.
Thank you.
So I'll hold, I'm sorry.
No, I just said, thank you.
So to Ada Rose Marin and Karen McDavid, and to all the members of that group, I want to thank them. And I'll hold on happenings as we're putting out a blog tomorrow. I will say in closing that the individual principals are putting out, have begun to put out schedules for the next two weeks for staff to go in under very scheduled return to gather all of their belongings. And then students will be given the same opportunity to go into the schools to gather all their materials. So they'll hear from their individual principals regarding that. But there's been a lot of interest about that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Superintendent. So next, this is Chair's Report. I'm going to move through this really quickly again because of time. We have summer retreat dates. Charlene had attached a calendar, of course, of June and July. You know, we usually have, we've decided to have our summer retreat sometimes early in June to try to, you know, flesh out like what we want our district goals to be. And I don't know, like, whether this year, we want to have district goals early or we want to do this later, since this is going to be such a fluid year. I just, that's something I've been thinking about. I don't know how you all feel about it, about when we should have our summer retreat to sort of set what we want the overall district's goals to be in this time of COVID. And again, I know there's still vacation dates to think about, et cetera, et cetera. But my initial ask, though, is, do you still want to decide to have a retreat earlier, like in late June? Or do you think it would be better to push it more to early August based on the COVID situation?
Sheila, it's Margaret here.
Yeah.
So I think that June, we're not going to know anything. I think that I'm hopeful maybe, you know, we'll get something from the commissioner. And, you know, Ada's right, there's going to be a lot of challenges around this whole local guidance thing and what that looks like town to town, municipality to municipality. You know, maybe our only goal should be to figure out what, how do we return to school? And how do we support that initiative as a school committee in the best possible way we can without causing chaos in the community? Without, like, just like, I think the, you know, the, that, I know we have academic goals to consider and all those other things to consider. I get that. But honest to goodness, Sheila, like, I feel like the only thing that really matters at this point is figuring out, how do we support the district through the next few months and then next year? And so, I think, setting something up later in the summer and really thinking about that, thinking about that piece being our mission as a school committee, to be part of the solution and part of the weaving of a different fabric for another year, should be the only thing that we're thinking about. But that's just my opinion.
Ada?
Yeah, I agree with Margaret. I think waiting till a little bit later in the summer, we'll know a lot more.
Yeah, that's what I think, yeah. Betty?
I agree. I agree with Margaret and with what Ada just said, too. I'd go for August.
Yeah, yeah. Kevin, yes?
I'd say the same thing as well.
Okay. So why don't we, so why don't we do this? Why don't we look at our calendars? We have a meeting next week. So why doesn't everyone look at their August calendars? And maybe we can try to set a date for August to put on the calendar where we're all free at our next meeting, to put it in the books. Does that sound okay?
Sure.
Okay, great. The next thing is our good old subcommittees. Talk about our, you know, our subcommittees. Charlene has, you know, attached the subcommittees as they currently stand and what we're all on. I'm asking for you to take a look at it and to think about next year. And if you want to remain on what you're on, if you want to switch on things, if you still want to chair what you're chairing, et cetera, et cetera. Like to maybe start thinking about that. And I'm going to put it on the agenda for next week for us to maybe start reconstructing it, you know, editing it as needed. You know, all of our various subcommittees. So if everyone can take a look at that and think about it and get back to me, you can text me, call me, email me. And we can also talk about it at the meeting as well, about if we want to stay where we're at, if we want to switch it up, chair a different thing, blah, blah, blah. So if everyone can think of that. And town meeting update, I don't think there's anything to change from last time we spoke. I sent you all an email that I forwarded from the town moderator, Bob His, that our way of communication for us during town meeting, I mean, right now, I think the only two articles that will really aggressively address us are the budget, of course. And then if we are going to speak and have an overview of school building situation, and if anyone asks us questions as a school committee member. So he had asked us all, he's asking each elected board, what is your form of communication? Because it will be a virtual town meeting. I'm assuming we all, that we could just do a group text and make sure that we have our phone handy. And if there's anything that we have to confer and discuss, and then, and then put out town meeting, we can use group text. Is everyone feel okay about that? Is having a group text on the issue or an article that we have to deal with or speak to, does that sound good?
Are you allowed to do that?
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, Bob His is like, you know, set all those options that I think, again, under the suspension in order to have any time of, any kind of town meeting under the, under virtual meetings, like, they have to allow this to happen in order for us to be able to communicate. As he said in the email, at the same time, I believe, I don't know if, I don't think it's just the governor that needs to vote in it. I think, I don't know if the Senate, maybe Glenn, you might know, and you could speak to it, if, if the Senate and the House of Reps and the Senate also have to confirm that it is okay to have a virtual town meeting. If they don't formally approve it, and they're demanding that us to have one in person, then things would change and would have it like even later in the summer than the June, is it 15th or 16th date? But it's my understanding from moderator His that electronic conversation will be okay.
The legislation authorizing virtual town meetings has not yet passed.
Right.
So he is planning for it in anticipation that will get some guidance from the legislature on how to hold virtual town meetings. Somehow or other, you know, right now, under current law, group texts would not be permissible under the open meeting law. So there would have to be something about, he had asked, for instance, that he would be on these. I know if there was a group text, would it have to be recorded and made public to everybody? I don't know how they would address this. But given that they actually haven't passed the legislation yet, we'll have to wait and see exactly how they intend to do that. I mean, the other option would be to do one of these Google meets with a published, with a published address that we would be on sort of separately from the other one, but that requires, you know, multiple.
Yeah, that requires two screens. Crazy. I mean, I mean, it would be like, we're on the Zoom meeting for town meeting, and then we have a phone or an iPad or a second device where we would be on a Google Hangout with each other. I mean, I think that's pretty complicated, but whatever. I mean, yes.
I'll tell you, I'm doing it right now because I'm moderating on one computer. Charlene Roach up there on your screen is actually me as well, moderating entrance into this, and then I'm on my own computer. And Kat was on, I think, three of them earlier, so.
I mean, I'm grateful and I commend him for trying to be as well-prepared because it is right around the corner. And I mean, I can't believe that, you know, the House, the House of Reps and the Senate, like, haven't, you know, chip, chip. If we have to vote these budgets, you know, then we got to know how we're going to do it. They got to make the call. Can we have it virtually or can't we? It's, you know, it's May 27th. I mean, do you, does you know, Glenn, or does anyone know? Like, are other bodies of town meetings or, are, is anyone like having their town meeting even earlier than that? Like in the, in the early week of June? I mean, I know we're like June 15th, but are people pushing it way out to July and August? Or, I don't know.
Well, given that we don't expect a state budget by July 1st, it's kind of hard to have a town meeting when you really don't know where your budget's going to be. We heard again today that we are likely looking at 112 budgets on the state level and therefore possibly on town levels, unless they choose to find some way to have a town meeting with a preliminary budget of some form, like we're trying to do in June. But, you know, it's, we don't even have a consensus from the House and Senate yet as to where revenue is going to be. We're hoping to get some sort of local aid, Chapter 70 agreement in advance of the end of the fiscal year to say, even though we don't know what the budget is, cities and towns should be able to count on X, Y, and Z for local aid. But it's not there yet. It's not, it's really not even close yet, as far as anyone can tell.
So you, do you think, do you anticipate that even our own town meeting could be pushed out even further due to this, given set of circumstances?
Well, if the legislation doesn't pass, you're looking at a town meeting on June 15th, which would have to be in person. At the moment, you still are not allowed to have more than 10 people, you know, in this phase of government. So there would have to be something that would allow it, one would think. The earliest, you know, with the various different phases, if everything went perfectly, you're looking at this July 18th date for Phase, whatever it is, three, where you would actually have enough ability to have that many people. And that's if everything runs perfectly. So, you know, I'm hoping, you know, I'm sort of expecting they will approve some sort of virtual town meeting because I think they probably have to. But it hasn't happened. And so we'll have to see where it comes out.
Okay. I'm sure that moderator His will, you know, keep us abreast of it. So, so that's where we are with that. Any questions or concerns on any of those things on the Chair's Report? Okay. Finance Subcommittee, Dr. Craighead.
In the interest of time, and because Dr. Pavlicek just gave the most perfect rundown on where we are or where we aren't with the budget, I'm going to cut directly to number two on my list, which is transportation. We need to vote on the transportation contract. I believe last time we met, I reported that, again, we only had one bidder for a transportation contract, same company, first student, and Same company, First Student, and the rate has gone up from about $71,000 a bus to about $75,000 a bus. So I'm going to read, I'm going to make a motion to approve this contract. I'm going to read it. The Milton School District Transportation Bid dated February 12th, 2020. Representing the regular in-district transportation, late buses and athletic and activity buses. Be awarded to First Student Incorporated of Providence, Rhode Island at a bid price of $408.58 for 71 to 77 passenger buses. $94.59 per day for late buses and $220 for in-town athletic, athletic activity trips. $320 for out-of-town athletic and activity trips and $90 per hour of excess driver time beyond four hours. Such total bid cost of $884,695.44. And on the basis of there being the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and in the best public interest. In order to ensure continued high-quality performance, we further recommend that the district require 100% performance bond for at least the first year of the contract at a cost of $3,400. And there's an appendix bid surety, which I'm sure you don't want me to read. So do I have a second on this?
I'll second it.
Great. Just to, if there's any discussion, I will lead it off. Going back to being able to see you all, in order to negotiate at all with First Student. If they're willing to negotiate anything about this contract, oddly enough, we first have to vote to actually approve the contract before any negotiations could happen. So if any of your questions or comments are about things that you might want to see done differently, we actually have to approve this before that could happen. Yeah, Ada?
Yeah, thank you. The, so, does this bind us to this amount of money? Or is there, is it based on our determined need, given the, all of the planning that still remains to be done for return to school?
Glenn?
What this does is it, it recognizes that First Student is the lowest bidder. And then what we do, we have to go in, they bid based on these, with an offer of these based on those specifications we put out in our RFP. We would then negotiate a contract with them, which we can deviate from their bid. We can make changes in it. The, you're allowed to, there's a certain percentage of leeway you're allowed to negotiate with them. This does have, this contract is a little different from previous ones in that our bids did have force majeure in them. So that if there's, you know, if, if school is closed, we don't have to pay for the buses. We actually have this, we actually put this in the bid specs this time around, which was amazing since we actually wrote them before we closed. But that was a lucky, lucky on our part, I think. But we have some, some language in there. We can look at things like, things we didn't anticipate, like what if, you know, you have a midday bus? What if you had different things that we would have to negotiate with them? So you do have a certain amount of leeway, but what this does is it recognizes that they're lower, that they are the lowest responsible responsive bidder. And authorizes us to negotiate a contract that can vary from this, I think by up to 25%.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, put it to a vote. It has to be roll call, given the circumstances. Dr. Donahue?
Yes.
Member Everhart?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
Member Rose Maron?
Yes.
Chair Varela?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Not a happy yes, but a yes. So, okay.
We're locked in yeses across the board, I'm sure, but yes.
So thank you all. That's, that's unanimous. And I just have two vendor warrants. I'm going to put them together. I'd like to make a motion to approve vendor warrant number 47 dated May 21st, 2020 in the amount of $546,468.05. And vendor warrant number 48 dated May 28th, 2020 in the very low amount of $64,090. That'll probably be the lowest one we ever approve.
A second.
Second, okay, great.
Just so you're aware, that low one is just reimbursements for fees paid in the spring for things that didn't happen.
Okay, so do I have to do roll call on this?
I think, I, I think we can all just say aye or no together. Ready? One, two, three.
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody a no or a, or a abstention? Okay, so that's unanimous. Thank you all very much.
Okay, Health and Wellness Report. Member White?
I did not type up my minutes. I'm sorry. I'll get to, I'll get them soon. But we met on, on May 12th and we had two major issues. Noel presented some data that he had done some research on about recess. And he had done that before the school closure. And basically, given our overcrowding, no one will be surprised to know that people were thinking we needed more staff out at recess to supervise the children. And some of the recess staff were looking for more, some professional development around PBIS and other things that might be helpful. And different equipment needs, but given that, the situation that we're in now, and I don't know what recess is going to look like. If we, when we go back to school, I'm reading that there will be no recess. I'm reading that there's no toys to play with. I'm reading that there'll be no, you know, with masks and social distancing, I can't even envision recess at this point. But, so that, that I'm, I'll type up. And then the other discussion that we had had more to do with just the return to school and having to really work and support not only the students, but to support the staff coming back in. And, you know, I know Maria Trossi has been in and net with different groups to help support the teaching staff and thinking about the return to school. And they've been just, you know, we were just talking a lot about how we think about the new materials and the expensive new materials that we're going to need with masks and with the cleaning supplies and everything, and whether or not the MFE and/or the boosters could help with some of those supplies. And we've been having some discussion, we've been like, having to really specifically train children about how to use masks, particularly little ones. How the hand washing and all that's going to go along with it. But so I would say the general discussion of, of the Health and Wellness Subcommittee was the overlap that we're going to have and we want to support, you know, Ada's committee and everyone else, you know, as we think about what the return to school is going to look like. And then the other thing is, is that we're going to start meeting again at the crack of dawn. We're going to start meeting at seven, 7:15 in the morning so that we can get students who are, who will want to participate, that they were not going to be missing class time and staff that would like to come, that could come at the beginning of the day. So I, we're not going to meet in June, but I will be putting out a schedule for the fall.
Great. That's great. That's good, that's good to hear about the students because there, when I was on it, they were always very important as far as their feedback, I felt. It was really good. That's great. Facilities, back to Ada.
Yes, thank you. The Facilities Advisory Committee met, met on May 12th. And we had a somewhat similar format to our meeting where we started off talking about what's going on in terms of custodians working in the building and, and needing to ensure that there are only a few on at a time and, and social distancing. But also concern about the summer cleaning with, they usually use summer students to help with cleaning the building. And, and that's probably an unlikely thing to happen this year. So Bill Ritchie is going to be figuring that out and working on that. He did talk about converting all the soap dispensers. And I don't know if it's the entire district or, or Glenn, do you know? If the, if the soap dispensers are.
It's the entire, it's the entire town. The company that makes the current soap dispensers and the refills for it has gone out of business. So we have to change out everything.
Yeah. So, so, yeah, the, the foam soap and, and all will obviously be getting a lot of use once we're all back in the building. So it'll be nice to have new ones. And then we transitioned into talking about what, what might happen once school began again. And fortunately, we have Bill Ritchie on board and he's already thinking about and acquiring things for our buildings and getting cost estimates for our buildings. You know, he's already, I think he's already purchased the, the Plexiglas screens for our offices. And he has a lot of ideas that he's been working on and, and he, he will be an important part of our Facilities Subcommittee of the Return to School Group. So that's it for Facilities.
Thanks. And, and I know that we're tough on time, so maybe I, it goes back to maybe finance, but. Glenn, do you, do you know, can you maybe just a note for finance? But I'm just always wondering like where we're going to get the money. You know, I mean, it's all about the money. I mean, even for, for the Return to School Task Force. I mean, everything that we want to do, it's going to cost money. So if we don't have, if the town is not going to employ teenagers that help do the regular thorough cleaning and prep work for regular back-to-school, like, is there any way that the town is going to give us money so that we can have, I don't know, per diem custodian workers or people like that, that we're going to need more cleaning? We're going to need more cleaning custodial-like help. I, I would think, you know, this summer and this school year than we've ever had before. Due to, you know, whatever we end up doing is like, is that something that I, I guess under Facilities that you'll address and ask for the money for from the town?
Well, there's a couple of different things. First, the town does have a grant for this year, fiscal '20, as part of the stimulus money. So anything we're buying right now in terms of Plexiglas, in terms of PPE, various different things are being paid out of that grant. They're not coming out of our budget yet. So that will be one source of money for the town. We have received a CARES grant, you know, that goes directly to school districts. We've received $112,000 that we'll have for fiscal '21. Again, that can be used for anything related to the closure and distance learning. So it could be for cleaning supplies, it could be for PPE, it could be for Chromebooks, it could be for, you know, it, it's a very loose grant in terms of its restrictions. So that piece is coming in. There is also, you know, question in terms of what's coming down in, you know. I've, I've lost count of what version of the stimulus we're talking about now with the, from the federal government. But there is the Heroes Act, which passed the House, but is not passed the Senate yet, which unlike the previous stimulus packages, would award money directly to states to be used for the impact of this. In fact, next week at your school committee meeting, the MTA is pushing a, a letter-writing campaign for that, for that. And they're going to ask for the Milton School Committee to sign on to it as well as many other school committees have. So there's a variety of different buckets. And, but part of it is too, that we're looking at what can we, you know, from savings now, what can we get now to get into the pipeline for next year? But certainly anything I spend in fiscal '20, I can charge off through the, through the Towns Grant. Fiscal '21 will have our own grant. It won't be enough, but will, it'll be a start.
Okay, just thinking about that out loud that, you know, we may would, I think we may need more custodians, but.
Just to say, we are hiring some, in fact, we did today. So some of the students we've had in the past who are now college students. We have half a dozen of those who are actually going to be working at the schools this summer. But they are not high school students. We're not hiring high school students.
Great. Okay, approval of minutes. You had in your attachments, Maureen Kennedy's minutes of, I'm just going to do both of these together. I'm going to make a motion to approve our school committee minutes for our meeting dated April 29th, 2020 and our meeting dated May 6th, 2020. Can I have a second on that?
Second.
Any editor changes if people read through them that they'd like to make? Dr. Donahue?
Chair, I, I think for the, the minutes on May 6th, I think we need at the end of our school choice hearing to indicate that there was a roll call vote. You made the motion to join from the hearing. I think there was probably a second. And then a roll call vote to leave the hearing and then we open the school committee meeting. So.
Okay. Maureen, can you make a note of that change? Maureen Kennedy, that'd be great.
Yes, I will.
All right, super. Anyone else? Any additions, edits, changes? Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to remake the motion to, to approve the minutes of May 6th, April 29th, 2020, and the minutes of May 6th, 2020 with the recommended change by Dr. Donahue. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Can you say aye?
Aye.
Anyone no or abstain? Okay, unanimous. Okay, next on the agenda, old business, none, citizens speak, topic response, we had none. Next meeting agendas, I think that we have, we've already spoken to the fact that we would like to talk about our retreat date in August, so everyone looking at the calendars for that. Would also like to speak about our regular subcommittees, about who will remain on what, share what, et cetera, et cetera. So to think about that. Superintendent Gormly, what else do we need to have on the agenda to speak to?
Retiree reception?
Oh, yes. We're going to have, yeah, we're going to have our retiree reception under the superintendent's report. I've been in touch with Charlene and she's reached out to everyone. And even though we can't have our traditional retiree ceremony, we're going to incorporate it as a part of our school committee. And she's reached out to all the retirees to see if they would like to zoom into our Google Hangout. And we'll still honor them and speak about them and give our well wishes. Everyone seems like they would like to participate in that. So that will be on our agenda on June 6th as well. And then Glenn, what did you talk about that may be on our agenda with regards to the Massachusetts Teacher Association?
Right, the, the representatives from the MEA would like to join us just to speak to this Heroes Act for, and to ask for the union to support, ask for the school committee to support. As other school committees have, I think they're going to come first to finance next Tuesday and present it there. And then hopefully to the full school committee on Wednesday night.
Okay. Superintendent and Charlene, anything else that we're missing to discuss for next week's agenda?
Nope, that's perfect.
Okay, great. All right, then I am going to make a motion to, to go into executive session. Hold on, I just want to look at my notes here for my correct verbiage. And I don't think I have it with me, even though I printed it out. All right, hold on one second. It's on another desk. Okay, so I'm just going to make an official motion to enter into executive session, to enter into executive session for the purpose of negotiation strategy for union and non-union personnel and for the approval of executive session minutes. I need a roll call. First, can I have a second on that?
Second.
And it's a roll call vote. Dr. Donahue?
Yep.
Member Everhart?
Yes.
Dr. Craighead?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
Member Rose Maron?
Yes.
And Member Varela, yes. Okay.